...for them, but they're my clients for like fifteen years and it's troublesome.
Seven or something. All the guys who are going to my house if they were, you know, they had to go to rent. Come by.
Well, it was my best, remember we were looking for the drill bits?
Yeah.
And we had to take one of these, one of these.
Yeah, yeah.
That's because she only has one.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, are we ready? Hello Frank, I don't think I said hi.
Hi, yes.
What are you talking about?
What you wouldn't sell for the rest of the week if you don't have it there.
Hey, I don't.
They count that as one.
Dollar General. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March nineteenth Town of Hyde Park Planning Board meeting. If you could, please stand with me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is Gilbert Farm here for a site plan and special use permit amendment. Can I have, do I have a motion to open public hearing?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you give us just a quick recap again?
Um, what we're proposing is basically moving the mini golf within the site from the existing, where it was originally proposed over by the rec buildings, over to where the chipping and putting area was approved closer to the driving range. Basically, the reasoning is currently the funding and financing of getting the buildings up and operational is delaying our timeline of opening it, and we've had a lot of out requests and discussion about trying to get the mini golf rolling and moving. So we wanted to find a location where it's better suited as a whole with the property as it is today. And we tried to nestle it into a spot where it was already proposed to have activity work done and that kind of things, and close to our building as well. So it's really a simple adjustment on the site from one location to the other.
And the way it's laid out, when someone comes in, they can park in the same spot-
Correct.
-and do either mini golf or the driving range, correct?
Correct, yes.
Or both, or have family members in one and watch them in the other and...
Yes.
Okay, great, great. I'd like to ask our consultants if they have any comments on this. Mr. Sotero?
Ken, maybe you can just briefly discuss the lighting, and there was some talk at our last meeting about any potential drainage impacts, so maybe you could just-
Yes.
-touch on those two things, because they may be of concern to some people.
Sure. Our lighting has been set up as best as we can to avoid any shining of lights towards the neighboring properties. We are facing most of the lights toward the interior of the property, but there is some instances where we have to have lights that are pointed in the other direction, although they're shielded and faced directly down. The foot candles are well below zero, more than forty feet away from the adjoining property line, so we should have no off-site impacts to that.
And they're ten-foot high only, right?
Correct, they're ten-foot high. There are low lights, they're not tall lights, anything like that, and we are going to have them on timers to go off at the end of business and that type of, whenever that is closed, they will be off, obviously, to save electricity for ourselves as well.
And we're talking about three nights or four nights? How many nights are you going to open?
Yeah, the late nights would be basically Friday and Saturdays. We were talking about staying open till eleven on those nights. The rest, we would be ten o'clock would be our closing time.
And again, this is seasonal, so we're only talking during the warm months.
Yes. And as far as, like Pete said, for drainage, the way the holes are oriented, we basically have a hard surface of a hole, you know, which is concrete for the mini golf, but in between it's going to be stones and river rock and that, so all the drainage would be infiltration directly onsite throughout and into the area. There's no drains or pipes or storm basins that are needed, because all the water's basically going to go through infiltration in the areas that they are right through the, and around the mini golf areas.
Okay.
That's it for me.
That was it. Ms. Paula Darrow?
No comments.
Okay, let me start on my left here, Mr. Signa.
No, I think it'll be a great addition, particularly since I see it as really young people oriented and focused, and having it local in Hyde Park is a great thing. So I encourage completion, and it's time for this season.
Mr. Murphy?
It's said it all.
Very good. Mr. Oliver?
I'd have to agree with Ed. I think it's going to be a great addition to Hyde Park.
And Mr. Marsagliano?
Nice project, yes, no other comments.
Okay, great. At this point, I'd like to open up the comments to the public. This is a public hearing. If you have something you'd like to come up and say or ask, please come up, state your name, and let us know what your thoughts are.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Bob Camp. I'm here tonight not as a reporter, not as a former council member, not as former anything. I'm just here as a concerned citizen. I'd like to see this project move ahead. I know very well that Ken is trying to expand this from just a driving range, which will not succeed by itself, that the mini golf will be an addition that will help the families that go there, it'll help the people that participate in the golfing that goes on at the place. And I also know that in the future, they want to go on to other things and expand this to make it really work. It's a positive thing for Hyde Park, we need it. There's opposing cons in Hyde Park right now about what's happening with business, some things going up, some coming down, closing shops and so forth, but this is a positive thing. And I'm glad the board has said that they are very much in favor of this, they'd like to see it go. I would love to see it go. I think it's important to get this off the ground and get it moving, and get it done before the season starts. They cannot exist just as a driving range there, they must have other things to attract people to come by. And I think it's so important to have this taken care of, and I appreciate that the board is in favor of this. I know there are neighborhood areas that are concerned about some of the things there. We went through this several years ago, when this first came up, when I was here at the town hall, participating in government. But I think what Ken is trying to do over there is make this a first-class operation. My grandson participates in one of these programs down in Cromwell, Connecticut, where they have golf, driving range, mini golf, and batting cages and so forth, all kinds of sports activities. They also have an instructor there for batting, who used to be with the Yankees organization several years ago. He was a minor league batting coach. If Ken could attract somebody like that, like we have the famous Knicks basketball player coming to Hyde Park very shortly, Andre Stoudamire will be here very soon, and I will be doing an interview with him to talk about his being in Hyde Park, and I think that's going to benefit what's going on in this town. We need some real positive things to happen, and you can make this happen by approving this. And I will support some of the neighbors who feel that there's things to be done, and Ken will take care of that. He's a person that really wants to make this a first-class operation in Hyde Park, so let's see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camp.
Ken, have you spoken to Tiger Woods yet?
Not yet. But the real reason for Bob really, really wanting his practice is, his project is that he needs, you know, the practice on the putting, I think.
It's a practice, okay, yep, yep.
He's good, I'll tell you that much.
Hi, David Ray, I'm just here, South Drive Hyde Park, I'm here as a citizen tonight. I'm on the town council right now. I use the facility myself, I'm one of the younger crowd that goes over there and takes part of that, but it's a first-class operation now, and I think where they're going to put it is much better than where they were, so everything will be together. It might improve my putting game, too, I don't know. So I'm definitely...
We believe in miracles?
Yes, I do. There's always hope, there's always hope. Golf is one of those games. But I wish them well, and all positive comments from the board, that's good, and it's good for Hyde Park. And the residents over there who have concerns, I'm sure will listen to them, because they are good neighbors, and they're doing a good job. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
My name is John Green. I live at Two Idaho Wild Drive, Poughkeepsie, New York, even though all my taxes are paid to Hyde Park. The board is only as good as your support, and I just wanted to take this time to tell you, in Donna Knapp, you got good support, because I was in Florida when I received your notice, and I came back and had to quick come down here, and whether it be this or anything else, Donna's always able to put her fingers on what one asks for, so she's worth her weight in gold.
Yes, she is.
Thank you, Donna.
Yes, she is.
I am for the mini golf with some reservations. I was here the whole time with airsoft, and all you people, you know, I heard your comments about the mini golf, and it was the same as the airsoft. I think you were sold a pick and a poke when you airsoft, okay? And we were really concerned about that, and frankly speaking, and I apologize in advance if I offend anybody at any time while I'm talking, but one thing I do is I don't talk behind anybody's back. And I think that airsoft was a disaster from the start, and I would really like to see the board at some time in the future yank whatever you have to yank to stop that going forward. It's not suitable for, and now you're talking about having kids playing mini golf that I believe it's only about three hundred foot away from where the airsoft line is, okay? I read your minutes, and it was interesting. I think the planning board has a right to investigate, ask questions based on planning, et cetera, et cetera, but when asked, the developer or the owner, what time it was going to close, and was stated that we don't have a time yet. Then later on, after someone from the planning board said, oh, maybe eleven, eleven-thirty, then later on, it talked about either ten or eleven. So I think the planning board, you know, there's more than just Hidden Brook there. Idaho Wild runs the whole length of that, almost the whole length, right down to the bus compound. One, I'd like to see it close at ten o'clock, and I'll tell you why. The driving range, and I went online, and when I did go online, thank God, I didn't see anything about airsoft, so that must be gone. But the driving range, the professional on the weekends and that, everything shuts at seven o'clock. The other thing is, during the summer months, the driving range is open from dusk to dawn, okay? I'd even say ten o'clock, or if some weird thing, the sun stays up to eleven o'clock, I'd say dusk to dawn or ten o'clock, whichever's later, okay? By the time everybody gets out of there, now the lights, I'm glad to hear, I did come down, I seen they were ten feet, and you can aim them down, and that's fine. I think if it's for the young adults or whatever, what I'm worried about is a car full or a truck full of college students coming up from one of our colleges. Just having a night out, having a good time, you know, first time away from home, we've got to have a good time. So I really want to make sure there's no alcohol on the premise. But other than that, I didn't see anything relative to the cost of play. I would assume it's going to have to be a reasonable cost. But I'd like to see the time changed to ten o'clock in someplace, in case Ken sells it down the road, or, you know, you always, this thing has been piecemealed time and time again, and we keep coming back, and we don't know what's next. And I understand the economics and why things can't be built at certain times, okay? I just hope, I seen the pictures, and I think one of the, one of the planning board members wanted to know about one of the pictures. I know we've all been there, where we've seen our famous fast food picture in the paper or on TV and whatever, and I know one time or another, we've gone to a fast food place and it doesn't look like the picture. So I hope this is not the case, and I hope it's a well-developed mini golf course, and just as good as the pictures that are on the internet, okay? So with that, I thank you, and thank you again, Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and speak? Okay. I did want to say that the resolution does address the hours, and that lights will be turned off by 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then by Friday, by eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturdays. So it's actually in the resolution that they can't go beyond 10:00 PM with the lights.
But not on the weekends.
Right, that's allowed till 11:00 PM. And are there any other items?
Motion.
As far as Seeker, the applicant, Seeker was done on this project in 2008, when the mini golf was in a different location.
Right.
And the applicant has provided a narrative explaining how the new location actually results in fewer impacts than the originally approved location. So we've added into the resolution a reaffirming, a reaffirmance of Seeker.
All right. Are there any other comments up here? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Who has this?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution reaffirming determination of non-significance and granting amended site plan and amended special use permit approval. Gilbert Farm Recreational Facility Mini Golf, dated March nineteenth, 2014, Resolution Number four dash zero nine B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior secret determination of non-significance issued on October seventeenth, 2007, and reaffirmed on April first, 2009, and January twentieth, 2010. And be it further resolved, the planning board hereby determines that the proposed relocation of the mini golf area does not change the board's prior findings under Section one oh eight dash eight point four A of the town code as set forth in Resolution ten dash zero seven C. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby amends the applicant's existing special use permit to permit the relocation of the mini golf area, subject to the condition that no outdoor loudspeakers are permitted. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the amendment of Phase One of the site plan to permit the relocation of the mini golf area to be constructed as Phase One C, as shown on the amended site plan entitled, amended site plan, site plan amendment, Gilbert Farm, prepared by LRC Group, dated January thirtieth, 2014. No revision date, and authorized the chair or is authorized, does need to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan to include the following note. The adjacent area of the New York State DEC wetland HP dash twenty-five in the vicinity of the parking area and proposed mini golf area shall be demarcated prior to the commencement of any land development work. Three, revision of the site plan to include the following note. Phase two and phase three cannot be constructed until and unless site plan approval has been obtained from the planning board. Four, revision of the site plan to include the following note. This site plan is approved for Phase One C only for the relocation of the mini golf area and the elimination of the chipping and putting area. Details of the approval for Phase One are shown on the site plan prepared by LRC Group last revised May thirtieth, 2007, and signed by the chair on November twenty-fifth, 2009. Details of the approval for Phase One B are shown on the site plan prepared by LRC Group last revised September fifth, 2013, and signed by the chair on September twenty-fifth, 2013. Revision of the site plan to contain the following note. Lights at the mini golf area shall be turned off by 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and by 11:00 PM, Friday through Saturday. Be it further resolved that the issuance of the zoning compliance letter by the zoning administrator after completion of the construction shall indicate that the mini golf area has been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan.
Sorry.
Do we have any discussion?
I'm just wondering if the planning board wanted to think about having a sign posted at the site that says no alcohol allowed on premises?
I would entertain...
Because, I mean, I could see where, you know, it's a nighttime activity, it could be on a weekend, you know, I mean, we were all-
Sure.
-younger once.
Some still are.
You know.
What does the board think about the proposal to add a sign?
I mean, I personally just, I think it's up to them to put that type of sign up. You know, it's their premises, their rules, and, you know, the state liquor authority has certain...
No, it's not about them serving it, it's about people bringing it on the property.
I don't know, I just think it's probably to them.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'd agree with Chan, you know, I kind of think it'd be up to the property owner, you know, not that it's, I think it's in his best interest to do it, but I don't know if it's within the power of this board to make that decision, to kind of dictate what can go on there.
Let me ask, let me ask if it is within our...
I'm getting a look. Well, it is a special use permit, oh, it is a special use permit, so you do have more control than just regular site plan review.
Right.
However, if the applicant obtains a permit under the, a liquor license from New York ABC, it's going to trump your local restriction, but he could put up a sign that says no outside alcohol, because either way, that's going to be prohibited.
Maybe he'll put it up anyway.
Mr. Signa, do you have any thoughts of, do you want to compel or...
No, I don't have any thoughts. My concern is that sometimes, when you put up a sign, you're encouraging something, because somebody says, oh, I never thought of that, and I didn't realize that you could have. And, you know, I appreciate the concern that you have, that all of a sudden it becomes a party element, but I think then the proprietor is going to be very concerned about that, and they're going to stop it.
Yeah.
I don't think they should be obligated to put up a sign, but should be within...
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the board is we don't want to compel it, but if the owner wanted to do it on his own, that would be, we'd be fine with that. Okay. So we have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Chan.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries. Congratulations. Can't wait to practice on the mini golf. Awesome.
Thank you very much. It's noting him.
All right. Next up is the Hyde Park Alf, or the Adult Living Facility. They're looking for a site plan extension for their property on Violet Avenue. Just remind us of your name and your...
I'm Jim Rogers, the owner.
Okay, so this is fairly straightforward, you're just asking for another, for your first ninety-day extension?
Yes, I'm just, presently, I'm waiting for the wastewater approval with DOH in the county. They've had it for a few months, it should, I made calls this week, and it should be ready any day now.
And so this is just an abundance of caution to make sure that your site plan does not expire?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
I wouldn't say it's an abundance of caution. It expired March third, but...
I didn't realize that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But just to make the board aware, I haven't closed on the property either, and that's kind of holding things up also.
Right.
I wasn't able to do a Phase Two up until last week, and I found that the grounds was contaminated with oil. The previous owner removed one tank, and when we, you know, we just play, the Phase One, we found there was a tank there, and the tank was not present, but the content was in the ground and exposed into the water, contaminated the water. And there was also a second tank in the area leaking, so the DEC is notified.
Okay.
We're going through the process of next week of trying to find out the parameters of the leak, and then it'll all be cleaned up.
This was an underground tank?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
They didn't even, they said it was removed thirty years ago.
Wow.
Because they had gas also, and they've been running on gas for the past twenty or thirty years.
Okay.
Was the other tank registered with...
The tank wasn't registered.
Oh.
You know...
It was old enough, right, that it wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think, it was old enough. They don't know what size tank was in, no one's saying anything, but we'll know, we'll know next week what the extent of the contamination is, and Hobo, Hobenches has said they will make sure everything's cleaned up.
Oh.
So there will be no issues with that.
That's good.
Well, I'm going to speak on behalf of Ted Moss, but I think she's going to request that you submit copies of everything-
Oh, sure.
-for the file, once it is cleaned up.
Yeah, permits have been filed here-
Okay.
-already, and we will, DEC will, we have to get the okay through them, and...
They're probably going to log this as a spill.
Oh, it's already logged.
I didn't know it's a...
Yeah, it's already logged.
Right.
It was actually logged...
Their process and...
It's logged as two separate spills on the property.
Wow.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, me, too.
Wow, this doesn't impact SECR?
No, not our SECR, no. It's just, it's just environmental thing, it gets cleaned up-
Victoria?
-and he signs off on it.
Mr. Signa has a question about...
My question was, this does not impact any prior SECR determinations or anything?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I assume it was localized, but either way, DEC is going to go in and make them remediate the damage.
Yeah, because it's in groundwater.
Right.
Yeah, they said because it's in the groundwater, it has to be remediated immediately.
Right.
So it's not going to linger on.
Public water.
You have public water at the site.
I have public water.
Right.
So it's not going to affect, it's not going to affect the building, property at all.
Right, right. Unfortunately, that area's had a few of these, these...
Multitude of issues.
Yes.
Bring that one up.
Correct, okay. Well, I hope that they can take care of that.
Yeah, I'll keep the board informed, okay?
Okay.
And if you don't, if you can't solve everything in the next ninety days, you are allowed to get a second ninety-day extension, if you need it.
It should be resolved.
Okay.
Pete, do you have any other comments? Victoria?
No.
Mr. Signa, anything else?
Nope.
No.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Oliver?
Don't come in.
Who has this file?
I have it. Resolution granting extension of time to meet conditions of amended site plan approval May nineteenth, 2014. Is that date correct? It's March nineteenth.
Oh, yes.
Ah, it's a catch.
I was being wishful.
Resolution number seventeen dash thirteen C. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the applicant a ninety-day extension of the time to meet the conditions of amended site plan approval as set forth in Resolution Number seventeen dash thirteen B from March third, 2014, to June second, 2014.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is release of escrow. Did everybody have a chance to review the amended escrow list?
Yeah.
There's one additional amendment to this list.
Amendment to amendment.
An amendment to the amendment. The last item on there for tumelia sail and canvas is going to be removed off of this, so, but all the other items on here would remain the same. Does anybody have any questions about the release of these escrows?
Nope.
Okay, can I have a motion to release the escrow on-
So moved.
-the March...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Some of us want to leave tonight.
I know, I know, I know. And then finally, we did, there was some back and forth on the minutes. Nope, I've got it right here. There you go. There was some discussion about the minutes and if we could entertain approving them, but I'm looking at who's present tonight, and everybody here can vote for both the January fifteenth and the February nineteenth minutes, has everybody had a chance to review these minutes?
I was there for the nineteenth meetings.
Right, right, that's okay. Collectively, between the two meetings, we would have a quorum to vote on both of those meetings. So for the minutes of January fifteenth, everyone here can vote on them, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January fifteenth?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And so for the meeting minutes of February nineteenth, everyone, with the exception of And so for the meeting minutes of February 19, everyone, with the exception of Mr. Marsiglano, can vote on those. Can I have a motion to approve these?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that being the last order of business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. And thanks to our media committee. You know, you need people looking out. You never know. It's another set of eyes and different perspective.
Is everything up? Are it still good?
Yeah, yeah. It is, actually. I'm really enjoying it.